Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member. Jordy Thompson, board member.
Ryan Cristelli, board member. Chris Nelson, superintendent.
Lisa Arnold, staff.
Eric Smith, staff. Zach, but that's just better.
And Dee Walker, staff.
We're going to get a motion for Stephanie.
I move that we excuse Stephanie from tonight's meeting.
I'll second it. And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of board meeting minutes for September twenty seven, two thousand twenty-two.
I move for the approval of board meeting minutes for September twenty-seven, twenty-two.
I'll second it. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I don't have any higher. Do we have higher letters?
We have higher letters, I think we just have Christine Cole for A.C.T. Manufacturing and Melissa Cohen for our Food Services Director.
Okay. Um, we're not reading those, so, okay, perfect. Okay, so consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it. It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
This is strike. Item six, we have a strike through, Harry and Martin Morris had a conflict tonight, he's actually here on October twenty-fifth. He's with the TCU and State Board of Education and we're going to begin going through our board policies or two thousand series on how our board policy is aligned with what we do.
How much longer do you think we would want to add, or like just for, just for the no, for that meeting, you said it could be a longer meeting?
It'll be a longer meeting, because we're probably going to be a good hour just on the priming ourselves for the two thousand board policy. And then we also have the long-range facilities plan update, which is probably going to be another thirty minutes. So, this meeting, because of that two thousand board policy, we're going to have a shorter meeting tonight. But, next, in two weeks, I think we might also do a joke, we might want to bring stacks.
Okay, I appreciate it. Uh, communications and comments. Anyone from ETO? EESP? ECOF? Admin? Are there any persons emailed, registered, to be heard?
No.
Okay, so, new business, we have out-of-area teaching assignments, Mr. Smith will be presenting.
This is just our standard approvals for, in this case, for East Christ Harbor, Jacksonville, as opposed to subject areas.
I'll move for the approval of out-of-area teaching assignments.
I'll second it. It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of master-based learning work plan for supplemental budget, Mr. Nesmith.
So, attached within the board packet is our master-based learning work plan. We discussed this last year, one of our district initiatives and a part of our district overall strategic plan is our master-based learning work. I'll go ahead and copy and I'll share it with our sure. Share screen. And the overall, overall intent of the master-based learning in June, January of two thousand twenty-one, State Board of Education passed the new WAC, Washington State Administrative Code. And that administrative code now says that students can earn credit by demonstrating that they've met standard. But one of the barriers within this is, is there's nowhere really across the entire state where we have actually mapped out the standards and can show students meeting standard. So the State Board of Education has released a grant for individual schools to build out what this would look like for a statewide system. Alma has applied for three buildings, so we've actually received the grant three times, so last year it was forty thousand dollars for building. This year, it is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per building, and our district is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of funding to help our district actually map out all of the academic standards vertically aligned kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And then again, relooking at our activities and which ways that students can show that they've met academic standard, really provide flexibility. And this has really become the cornerstone of our district strategic plans, our career college readiness plan is how do the standards embed with another dual credit? Or our registered apprenticeship initiatives, and our pre-K initiative, how do these kindergarten readiness standards map out into our early learning programs? Our UDL work, universal design learning, we're talking about our students and our IEPs. How can we map out the standards in a way that we're providing supports for students? Right, so like a student who, in the case of my daughter, who's dyslexic, would need reading support. But in a social studies class, which is reading intensive, how are we providing those students, you know, when the content and the standards are social studies based, how are we providing support within, you know, reading support? So, it's a pretty exciting project, attached within your board packet is the actual work plan that we've submitted to the State Board of Education. And this is actually mapping out the work that we've committed to doing and where are we going with our actual standards-based grading and how are we building work and how are we providing support for our students? And we are asking for approval of our board plan and how we will be using the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we have a budget attached, and how it will be moving forward on our master-based learning work. So, and included within the budget, so I pull that up too. Included within these attachments are our budget, is where the funding will be going. And included within it is also our roadmap, the process we will be going through. I'll share most of those. So this is our proposed budget for the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Which will actually move a portion of one of our administrative salaries to building out the teacher onboarding system and actually supporting the UDL work. We use the master-based learning, the guidance and counseling office for per gam for as far as building out our master-based learning work. A hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars was budgeted to pay per gam for our teachers for their sitting, going through all of the standards and mapping out all of the standards kindergarten through twelfth grade and then building proficiency scales and how do we evaluate whether or not a student has met a standard. Fifty-nine thousand dollars was used for individualized professional development for those teachers to go through the training on mapping out the standards. Included within this is, we actually have our teachers are going to a training in Denver, Colorado, training under Robert Marzano himself.
Wow.
So actually, training under some of the top educational researchers in the world on how to map out our instruction. And then, what kind of technology have we used and that includes like our thought exchange work and how we're collecting feedback? And also how we've been paying for our power and our management system, which means how we move over to a grade book that manages by standard. Most grade books are, here's your assignment, chapter four, question, odd, you know, odd number questions, answer the questions in the back, it's worth twenty points, and that's how generally assignments go on the grade book. We're now also shifting over to a grade book that is literally just the standards. And all of those assignments, questions in the back, quizzes, tests, and different ways in which students can show that they've learned what we need students to learn. So it's paying for the technology, so that is how we're using the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and also included with that is the board support that we'll be receiving, that is scheduled for our next board meeting, and how we will be doing how we will be providing adopting board policy, I'll show the last one, and then this attached is the roadmap on how we will be moving this work forward. So we began our work with our August kickoff, which we actually mapped out the academic standards with our teachers. We're currently going through the process between August, September, and October, and you'll see us within this kind of column here. Where we're actually now reviewing all of the academic standards and how we evaluate those standards. So you can see how we're working our way through the process on how we expect to be at the beginning stages of the master-based plan to a culminating stage of a master-based plan. And what we're seeking on is the addition of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and the addition of the teacher responsibilities beyond the collective bargaining agreement. We're seeking approval on the use of this, and the supplemental budget, the master-based learning grant, and actually, and the responsibilities in regards to building out our master-based learning process. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious, so three hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five per school, the budget there is that, I saw like a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for teaching. Is that going to be spread out evenly between all three schools, since each school only gets a hundred and twenty-five each?
No, we were actually able to submit our plan as a whole district plan. And the way we onboarded was one teacher per content area and one teacher per grade level, actually, we had it open and available. I mean, we, we went around recruiting, if another teacher said, hey, I really want to be involved, we're not prohibiting anybody from being involved. It's just, it's just work, we know that we couldn't pull the work off though unless we did have at least minimum one teacher per grade level. When we pulled that work level plan, the idea is that once the initial phasing of the mapping out, which you saw in that work plan, which is September, October, November, they were going to be moving that work into the late start Mondays, where the teacher who's on the master-based learning team will be going to work on those late start Mondays and then reviewing all of those standards. So that way, all teachers have an ability to weigh in. But that late start Monday time won't be common, you know, because it's already paid, it's part of their paid work day. That's also the reason why we're seeking board approval, because we're seeking board approval on approving the time commitment beyond the contracted time.
Okay.
Thank you.
And how long is the, how often would we have to reapply for the grant, you said it was for, it rolled over from one year to the next year?
We, it's a three-year work project. So we got, we received forty thousand dollars per building last year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per building this year, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per building next year. Next year's work plan will actually be moving forward on what does it look like for now that we have the standards mapped out? What kind of activities and ways in which can we, can students demonstrate mastery? So we'll actually be moving our layer of support now for mapping out the standards to ways in which students can demonstrate mastery, we really want to have students become co-authors in how they demonstrate mastery. Right, like, you know, I, you know, this, talking about ELA standard, and ELA standards, like I can write an essay or paragraph or, you know, proper grammar usage. You really, once you've mapped out the standards, it's pretty well unrestricted on how they show that they've learned, what they're required to show that they've learned. So, and again, that's how we wanted to use like our registered apprenticeship, I mean, we're the only school district in the entire region who runs a registered apprenticeship, but we can embed academic standards with the bright and learning opportunities now. So we can be really creative for our students, I mean, it's a really student-centered way of teaching, the way students have a say and, and agency and how they can show that they've learned. And it's paid for. I move for the approval of master-based learning work plan for the supplemental budget.
I'll second that. It's been a motion made and seconded, are there any additional questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval to adopt superintendent evaluation criteria.
Um, yeah, we try to be really, really transparent on how I'm evaluated and how I do my job, we actually have our, our board agenda prep where we map out, these are the things that we need to work on this year, these are the areas in which the Elma School District wants to focus on our improvement. And then, we have all of those mapped out for board agendas in the future, so that way, every time we come to a board meeting. So again, tonight is supposed to be the two thousand board pause, where one of our board goals this year is we want to make sure that our board policy is aligned with what we're, you know, we're doing. So, we've taken the board goals, mapped it out against the state the state standards, and then mapped out the actual tasks, which are the board goals, against the state standards to show this is the work we're going to get done. So what we have is the continued development of the Elma School District data dashboard, we're pretty close to complete, actually, I think I might be burning my board report a little bit, but we actually have our cell data now is within our data dashboards, now we all have all of our social emotional learning, and then we're running a new fix of social emotional learning. So then that way, we can begin seeing how our social emotional learning impacts our students, and that was what we were waiting for, for that dashboard. Finalizing the development of our, our strategic plan, so our pre-K, early learning initiative, master-based learning, career college readiness, social emotional learning, and universal design learning. That one actually kind of comes after the data dashboard, especially know what we want to do, but now we need to have data to show how we're starting. So that data dashboard is really kind of, will depend on completing our strategic plan, so we know, so we can quantify our starting point. Development and implementation of an instructional material adoption process, data law requires that our community members have an ability that, we have a building community committee to engage in our curriculum and our instructional materials, and making sure that we have that process aligned, that that section of board meeting is scheduled near the end of the year, because generally that's done in May, and we have a board policy that we're going to be reviewing before we get to it, so we also have them staffed down, so we'll give the board policy two thousand board policy or instructional materials adoption, and then we'll finalize instructional materials adoption. Culmination of our district long-range facilities plan, scheduled for our board meeting in October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, so it's at our next board meeting. Development of our school district emergency preparedness and safety response plan, we saw that we needed some updating on our emergency preparedness plan. And then the continuous study of our Elma athletics program needed compliance of state requirements. So, kind of tasked at the end, if we really want to review our athletics program, do we have all of our coaches trained, are concussions trained, do we have coaching and athletics for event processes? So as I understood, these were the criteria that the board really wanted us to target this year in areas of improvement for the Elma School District.
Um, question, it might be semantics, well, maybe it's not, actually, when it's a continuous study of the Elma athletics, would it be athletics slash activities? So I want to be inclusive of that, if that's what that.
I do want to be inclusive, but our athletics, and then one of the big areas is our
The physical part of it, for the concussions and the safety and the
The actual very literal WIAA requirements that we have, and we intentionally left activities out.
Okay.
Because I think a great example would be like our drill, a drill program, where you can run an athletics drill program, or you can run an activities drill program, and state rules and requirements of the two are different. Like an activities drill program can practice year-round, an athletics drill program has to be within a specific season. So when we said athletics, that was really intentionally exclusive of activities, not because we weren't trying to leave activities, we're not trying to leave our band programs out, or performing arts programs out, or drumming programs out, saying, we don't have WIAA concussion management programs requirements of our band program.
True.
And we're really talking nuts in those legal requirements of our athletics program, and making sure that we are continuous study of state compliance and requirement.
Okay, I just wanted a definition of that, so that we knew really what we were focusing on.
I appreciate it. So I'm seeking approval on my evaluation criteria, so we're all clear on what work is getting done this year.
I'll move for the approval to adopt superintendent evaluation criteria.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to increase adult lunches to five dollars.
I'm asking approval to raise lunch stop for adults to five dollars, the new state rate came out, it's four eighty-four, we have to be above that threshold for adult lunches. So five's a nice even number.
That's if people want to, or staff, or somebody wants to purchase lunch.
Yeah, because it's free for all kids.
Value.
So it would be staff members.
Gotcha, okay. I'll move, go ahead, Fran.
I move for the approval to increase adult lunches to five dollars.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the boys' basketball booster fundraisers?
Eric is Rose Carter.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh no.
Our
Are you there, Rose?
Does she have to unmute herself?
Oh, okay, am I working now?
You are. You are.
Jeez, okay, so I guess, is there any questions or clarifications on?
Yes.
Okay, because we did the same exact ones last year, so.
Go ahead.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I thought you had a question. I thought you were
No, I don't know, no, I was just saying if she was on here or not, I was going to say that I could probably answer the questions if she didn't show up, because they are the exact same ones we did last year.
Yeah, last year, we bought free cash prizes, oh, there is one, what, okay. I didn't see this, a little tiny baby print under here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, nope, I think I'm good, anybody else?
I'll move for the approval of boys' basketball booster fundraisers.
I'll second. An emotion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, best of luck, thank you, Rose.
Thanks, guys.
That's okay, I didn't see the small tiny baby writing under there, of the spell-out cash prizes. Um, Ryan, you're going to get a checkmark on the board? Superintendent Report?
We're actually making a lot of progress, we're happy to have you, Dee is our new administrative support, our administrative assistant in the superintendent's office, she's taken over all of our social media, so she's been building templates, she's also moving toward, I think, only what is it, about an hour and a half ago, Dee sent me some templates on the community newsletter that she's going to work in building, so she's also been working on communicating with our secretaries now on what kind of information do we have and what, like, are our activities that are coming up, are games that are coming up? So I think Dee's made some posting and saying, we've got a game, blah, 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 and then apparently come home and comment and go, we're not playing that person. Which is great feedback right now, because it lets us know that where Dee's getting her information might not be up to date, so now Dee can go back to those buildings and say, hey, I just communicated that we're playing so-and-so, and now parents are telling me we're not, which means we obviously have a breakdown in where our information is and what we're able to share, so. Dee's been problem-solving all of those issues, and I think she just hit the ground running. Another piece that she's done is a, kind of, by setting up appointment schedules, our HR office has kind of had an open-door policy, but one of the issues with an open-door policy in an HR office is that you don't know what you're walking into. And so Dee has also been saying, like, our HR, our office really can't have an open-door policy, because we do need to make it, you might walk into a very, very, very personal conversation. And we really want to make sure that the rights of our employees are being protected, so we're kind of setting the culture, so Dee's just been doing a great job in setting that culture of our
That's wonderful.
Um, you know, as I said earlier, we're really set up, I know that we have coming up, our November twenty-second is going to be our cell dashboard, and Eric actually made great strides in getting our social emotional learning dashboard set up. So, those that came back came active from last year's cell data, we're running the new cell dashboard. Parents got an email, they can totally opt out, we're not requiring parents that their children have to do our social emotional learning. But we do want to reiterate, that's not for feedback on your student, we're not saying Johnny's having said social emotional concern. It is more on, the questions are in regards to, does your student feel a connection to the campus or the community, does your student feel like they have support, does your student feel like this? And it really is a formative assessment for us to come back and reflect upon our services and how are we supporting students? So we do ask, you know, a lot of parents might opt out of the social emotional learning survey, but this is all part of our, our mission and movement for continuous improvement. So we do hope that a lot of parents have their students to the social emotional learning dashboards. Currently, we have Bill and Christie are in Chicago right now, are part of a consortium of school districts across the United States, learning on how to rebuild our data dashboard on our career college readiness, I mean, there's data indicators that show drive of career college readiness. Our PRC data for the class of twenty eighteen shows fourteen percent of Elma graduates pursued a four-year degree. So out of a hundred graduates, that would be fourteen students pursuing a four-year education, which is not okay, because not every student pursue a four-year education, twenty-nine percent pursue a two-year degree. You know, so we're still running about thirty-six percent, sorry, twenty-nine percent, forty-six percent, you know, just under fifty percent pursuing a post-secondary education. But we know about seventy percent of all jobs require post-secondary education. So Bill and Christie are currently in Chicago right now, and looking at ways in which we can drive that post-secondary enrollment rate up from a team of schools of some of the top school districts in the nation. On that topic, I was asked today, it was in Centralia, presenting with the original STEM networks, we've got to get the keynote speech for all businesses, I'm trying to build post-secondary performance. So it was nice that Elma was recognized as kind of the keynote body to talk about the work we're doing, and it was really focused on the fact that we have a registered apprenticeship. We have the only program in this region where you can work, earn journey-level certifications, and get a journey card while you're in high school, getting paid while you were in high school. And earning that dual credit, that college credit, fifteen college credits. And then last, and I mentioned this earlier, we're really excited to be sending a team to Denver for the master-based learning work, and this is all paid for out of the master-based learning grant, on driving our I actually have one more great piece, driving our master-based learning, so our teachers will be studying under Robert Marzano, who literally wrote the book on building these master-based learning environments. And the cost was pretty negligible compared to a conference, but the person who wrote the book, I think he's entered this phase in his career where he only wants to work with the districts willing to do the work. So we're excited that we have Mark Keating and two teachers coming to this conference. And my very last piece of great news was I had the ability on Thursday last week to go visit our transitional kindergarten program. And we are now using our transitional kindergarten for students that are four years old turning five to enroll into a pre-K enrollment program. We are still actively going through the screening process, and we're looking for students that are not enrolled or not receiving any kind of services. We want to make sure that every student within our community is receiving services, we're really trying to point where we know about a good twenty percent of our students that are in kindergarten do not receive any kind of services, and we're trying to make sure we're capturing the population, not pre-K. And I'll just share one story, there's one little girl, this is that the teacher is having her line up for recess, she goes, all right, let's line up for recess. One girl goes, hi, she goes, teacher, what's with your vest? And one boy goes, when you go outside and play on the toys. She got really excited, and go, have you, I go, have you ever been to recess, have you ever had a recess before? She goes, I've never had a recess, I've never been to school before. So, to know that, we know that a good thirty percent of our students, or twenty percent of our students, were showing up for kindergarten, kindergarten is the first time our students had ever seen a book. And now knowing that we can reach this population and provide pre-K services, we do feel it's going to have a huge impact on reducing our special education rates and our early service rates, where we can start putting books in hands and providing services for students before they show up. So I just feel like between launching apprenticeship, launching a transitional kindergarten program, mapping out our master-based learning, as we move into our social emotional learning dashboards and our UDL dashboards, in those two areas, really providing the infrastructure, I just feel like, there's a lot to report on, and we're really moving in a good direction.
Thank you so much, I'm really excited about that, TK.
I'm looking forward to saying, you know, approve of the way
Me too. Did we put that on for November, is that when we're going to have a?
Yeah, I think, hang on, no, I moved cell up, so I actually, we kicked them back.
We'll go a little bit further out.
K was going to be in November, but now they're in May. Which is fine, because now it means that
I like that, May.
And, and there's more than just TK. One of the things that Greg spoke about, Mr. Strugge spoke about, is we have launched badge books in our kindergarten program, that we can map out the standards. There's a reason for that, we want to have academic standards written out, so again, we can hand those to parents, and parents can look at ways in which they can support their students. So who wants students to be able to count to ten before they show up for kindergarten, there's great things parents can do, it's like wash dishes, and you can count the dishes as you're putting silverware, as you're putting it away. So the badge books is going to help us become better partners with our families, and also become better partners with our early learning providers, so we can begin pushing out those learning standards to support them, so I think May is
Yeah, right.
So this is kind of off-topic, but in topic, homecoming was this weekend, and this was kind of our first, like, homecoming since COVID. I know last year we posted it off-site, so I'm just curious how that went.
Um, I mean, my
Was there tons of kids?
My, yeah, there's, there was a lot of kids. My own daughter got a chance to, it's her first homecoming, I'll, I'll be really, really blunt, I had an actor who was like, I don't want to see you there, so I did not stop.
I kind of wondered about that. I kind of wondered about that. I was just curious. So there was participation, a lot of participation from the kids.
I think the whole week, all the way up to the dance, like the ask said, there was a huge line to get in.
I love that.
I think it was wonderful, really to price point kids the way they did. It encourages everyone to be able to be a part of it without feeling the financial burden. So I, whoever made the decision for that, I'm just very, I wanna say thank you, because that was really important to not be stressing families.
Yeah, not only that, but the social media part of it, continually seeing just the hype and, and making, I mean, I still had a kid going, but. You could just feel it on Facebook and on Instagram is basically where I get my information. So anyway, I thought it was really good.
Yeah, I, the, the responses leading up to Friday night, I mean, most people don't know this, but we got a call Sunday. That said, and I don't, hopefully this isn't, I wanna, but we'll just put in kind of what's in general going on. We got a phone call Sunday that Black Hills was canceling our game. So we began last week without a homecoming game. And Ron actually worked pretty tirelessly to ensure that we actually did have a game. I mean, he was scouring the state, I think he came back, and it was like, oh, I got a couple four-way schools, and I was like, I don't know if I wanna play a four-way. So we weren't sort of like, so I know Ron nailed the game down, so really huge kudos to Ron. I'm getting a game nailed down, South Windy came down, and you know, they played, we almost had nothing. I know we had to move the game up an hour, but it was move the game up hour or not play. So.
And it appeared to be a very competitive football.
Yeah.
It was a very competitive football game.
Which was nice, and I think you said going forward, we're probably gonna keep them on our.
I think that was our agreement, which we made, right? And then I know that the parade, the parade was just an absolutely incredible night. Eric was a grand marshal. Eric and Micah were grand marshals, our IT department. And I think those are, couldn't think of more deserving, you know, grand marshals. So we helped our district operating over these last couple of years. Now Eric and Micah really become the cornerstone on how we're really trying to have data to show that we're improving. I mean, our goal here is to, you know, so I could do a better grand marshals. And then I ran around with my phone, and I didn't have a camera, and I was like, we're taking photos, so I took some photos, so I got it put on our social media, so.
That's good stuff. Good work.
And I led the parade, and it's been a couple of years since I led the parade. And I was amazed at the number of people that were in the downtown corridor, supporting all the kids and.
I saw a picture of the youth football, and I was like, holy.
It was.
Yeah, there was.
They were so cute, and all their little jerseys and sweatshirts and.
So funny story. I'm riding with Ryan. Ryan led the parade, so Ryan just did the parade. And actually, Ryan came in on his day off and led the parade, so actually, we're thankful for Ryan. And actually, we're thankful to you, because I know that Ryan was coming as center of chief, so I made a point to make sure that we got the roads closed. He had to pivot for us. So I think a huge thank you really needs to go out to Ryan. I'm thinking it was just like, we're so worried about having a football game, because we didn't know we were gonna have a game. Ryan goes, do you have the city blocked off? I, I don't know. So I go, let me, let me make sure the roads are. Uh, so anyway, Brian really does, under his other hat, as a sergeant, really does deserve huge kudos for ensuring that that parade went off. Because I don't think, I didn't know we had a call police department to block the roads off. And Bill, being a brand new principal, he didn't know that either. So without Ryan, we'd probably been having traffic going up and down the road. I had no idea. So Ryan really was another one of our silent heroes. And then my, my funny story is I rode with Ryan until he got close to the school, and then Ryan was able to kind of finish the parade. The whole parade, we could hardly move, but like, come on, let's go, let's go, let's go. So I asked Micah, and Micah goes, well, I don't wanna get too far away from the girls. And I go back to Jamie, why are the cars so far? Well, because I don't wanna be gassed out from the exhaust. So one truck is not going, because the girl are getting too far away, and the girls are intentionally not moving forward. So Ryan's in the front going, are we gonna get this parade? So Ryan, just, I found out what happened.
Thank you. Every, every year, we're gonna get better.
Every year, we're gonna get better. And so next year, we're gonna say, if they're following a car and foot, they want out of this space, so they're not getting exhausted.
Eric, can you create a da-da-dah? Homecoming week, da-da-dashboard.
Awesome. Well, it was a good week, it was a really good last couple of weeks. So appreciate everybody's hard work and all the things that you behind the scenes do. The kids, I know, appreciated it and were able to have just a, a regular, traditional Alma homecoming, and that's great. Okay, I don't know if we have Ms. Delaney tonight.
Hi.
Evening, Delaney.
So I don't have a whole lot for my report today. I just really wanted to remind everyone to check in on their loved ones, you know, make sure that everyone's doing okay. You know, when the weather starts to kind of cool down a little bit, people do tend to get more sad. And so especially living in Washington, when all the rain starts to come back. Yeah, everyone just kind of check in on your loved ones, check in on yourself. Yeah, that's pretty much all I have.
Did you enjoy homecoming?
I did, it was really fun. I had a great time.
Good. Would you say from the student perspective that it was well-attended?
Yeah, there were a lot of people there.
Good, well, thank you, Delaney, I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, likewise. Okay, that is it for the regular meeting. We will move into executive session. We're going to use about 20 minutes with no action being taken for the evaluation of public employee. And then we will reconvene for adjournment. So thanks, everyone.
We will go into executive session at 6:35, it will come out at 6:55. We will go into executive session at six thirty-five. It will come out at six fifty-five. We will go into executive session at six thirty-five. It will come out at six fifty-five.